Good evening.
Plan.
Welcome to the Tuesday, November 12, 2024 Board of Supervisors meeting. This meeting is now called to order. Ms. Whitten, will you now conduct roll?
Supervisor Lewis.
Present.
Supervisor Day.
Here.
Supervisor McDaniel.
Here.
Supervisor Lyons.
Here.
Chair Ayers.
Here. We will now offer a moment of silence before an invocation in observance of Veterans Day. Those intending. Thank you. We will now offer a prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Those attending are not required to participate, but if you would like to join, please do.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for leadership and guidance as we make decisions that affect our communities. We thank you for our community, state, and country in which we live. We're thankful for the freedoms that we unfortunately frequently take for granted. We're thankful for all the men and women who have served in any of the military branches or are currently serving. These men and women give so much to ensure that our freedoms endure. We pray that you watch over the men and women serving in our military and their families as well. I humbly ask your prayers in your name. Amen. I pledge allegiance due to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We will hold citizens' comments near the beginning of the meeting. We will do our best to take citizen comment remotely. There are two options for citizens to offer comment. To join by telephone, you may dial into one of the numbers listed on the county website. Webinar ID and password are there for your convenience. Citizens wishing to simply view the meeting live or after the fact can do so on the Rockbridge County Board of Supervisors YouTube channel, also available on the county website. If you wish to make a citizen comment as a Zoom meeting participant, you will use Raise Your Hand feature. You can press the Raise Hand button on the bottom of your Zoom window or press star nine if you are calling by telephone. Are there any changes to the agenda?
I have none.
Recognizations and presentations. Retirement resolution for GIS coordinator Dan Grimm.
Resolution expressing the appreciation of the Board of Supervisors of Rockbridge County to Daniel R. Grimm on the occasion of his retirement after 25 years as Rockbridge County's GIS manager. Whereas Daniel R. Grimm was born and raised in Rockbridge County and graduated from Lexington High School in 1976. And whereas Dan received his Bachelor of Arts degree from Virginia Polytechnic Institute and State University in 1992. And whereas after graduating college, Dan began to his career working in agricultural engineering department at Virginia Tech, working on digitizing tax maps and USGS quadrangle maps, and then working in a private practice at Anderson and Associates, working on 911 addressing, mapping, and public utility mapping for four years prior to accepting the position as GIS manager. And whereas in January 1999, Dan was hired as Rockbridge County's GIS manager, becoming the county's first county GIS employee. And whereas Dan diligently provided the county with expert advice and well-reasoned and communicated recommendations in a myriad of complex mapping issues and addressing issues. And whereas Dan's advice was instrumental in the successful implementation of the county's GIS, completion of many projects and initiatives, including but certainly not limited to enhanced 911 mapping, working with the Virginia Geographic Information Network and the Shenandoah Valley GIS Users Group. Whereas Dan detailed work on many mapping projects to include planning and zoning, economic development, public utility projects, fire and rescue mapping, redistricting projects, and the conception of the Rockbridge Area Network Authority. And whereas throughout his 25-year career while serving as a 911 address coordinator, Dan has incorporated hundreds of new dwellings, townhouses, businesses, and industries into the county's GIS system. And whereas in coordination with the Office of Community Development, Dan worked on numerous special exemption permits and rezoning with positive net impact on both residences and businesses. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Rockbridge, Virginia does hereby express deep appreciation to Daniel R. Grimm for his many years of dedicated service and offers sincere congratulations and best wishes for a happy and productive retirement adopted this 12th day of November 2024.
I move we approve that.
All right. Dan, would you like to come up?
Dan, we'll get this, we'll get a frame for this. You'd be amazed how hard it is to find a frame this size.
That arrives unbroken.
We're moving to formalize that resolution. Mr. Grimm. Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Hi.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Day.
Yeah.
And I vote yes. Citizens' comments. We will now welcome citizen comments. When your name is called, please address the board at the podium stating your first and last name and magisterial district. Please limit your comments to no more than three minutes. There is a timer on the table for your convenience. Is there anyone signed up to speak?
Yes, ma'am. Bob Hopkins.
Yes, sir. Bob Hopkins. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm not saying I'm getting old or anything, but the last time I stood here in front of the county supervisors, Nana Lou Souter was here and Maynard Reynolds. Don Austin, I think, was sitting in your chair. And anyway, it was all about the Veterans Memorial. That was back in 1999 and 2000 when I was commander of the VFW and kind of the project officer on that whole Veterans Memorial effort that we did. Last year, there was a woman named Colette Barry Rec who passed away. A veteran probably never had a better friend than Colette. She's the one that started her own little care box project. And she raised money for, shopped for, packed, and mailed over 2,800 care boxes to veterans from Rockbridge County who were serving over in Iraq and Afghanistan and Syria and places like that. Well, anyway, after she died, the family requested that any funds that people wanted to send in in her memory were sent to the VFW. We collected $3,000. She was loved not just by the veterans, but she was also active in a lot of other things. So tonight, we would like to donate that $3,000 to Rockbridge County to be added to the escrow account that we have for the Veterans Memorial Perpetual Care. Just as a little background, I know my time is almost up, but we raised about $135,000 for the Veterans Memorial. The county contributed 25, incidentally. And the memorial cost a little bit less than $125,000. So the leftover money we gave to Rockbridge County, who then you folks have set up this little escrow account. And what we do is we use that primarily, it's been used to pay the Blue Ridge Garden Club. And they, for 24 years now, have been maintaining the planter down there in the Veterans Memorial. So anyway, and before I give the check to you, let me make a plea. I would like to see a memorandum of agreement between the city and the county to delineate the care for the Veterans Memorial. There, for instance, there are a lot of leaves that are collected in there in the fall that should be blown out at least. The shrubs are overgrown as I speak tonight. The light is out on the flag that's supposed to be illuminated at night. There should be a memorandum of agreement as to who's going to do what and when. For instance, should it be power washed once a year, once every two years, once every five years? And who's going to arrange for that? And I would hope that maybe as part of the courthouse square renovation, that maybe there could be a memorandum agreed upon between you folks and the city folks. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Hopkins.
Thank you very much.
Won't you hand it to the Chair of the Board?
Can I come down there? Let me.
Okay, on the count of three. One, two, three. Okay.
That is all who's signed up.
All right. Is there anyone?
Madam Chair, if I could say something.
Absolutely.
First of all, I appreciate all our reference and what was said tonight. But I think we could direct Mr. Suter to reach out to the city of Lexington tomorrow since they have a public works department and take care of some of these things immediately because they shouldn't be like that and they can bill us or whatever they want. But let's not wait to have to get a memorandum of understanding on who's going to do what because we could be sitting here next year at this time still trying to pencil it out. But let's get on it right away.
I'm pretty confident we can do that. We did, we did start that process in the past one time and it didn't completely pan out, but I think we can get that done. The city has been a good partner.
Right.
Thank you. Is there anyone online?
I'll just check.
All right. Is there anyone that did not sign up that would like to speak? Approval of the October 28, 2024 minutes. Did everyone have time to review the draft minutes?
Move to approval.
All right. Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Hi.
And I vote yes. County financial report and appropriation resolution. Mr. Harrison.
Yes, the total amount of bills for this period is $655,025.96. We do have three additional appropriations. One is a $4,500 donation to Fire and Rescue for the boones over Rockbridge event. $500, $500, $500 insurance reimbursement. And the largest is $86,243.31. And that is owed to Centra Health. We've been billing them for the Rivermont since 2017. They've been paying property taxes also. When I say bill them, we bill them PILT, which stands for payment in lieu of taxes. And they've also been paying and are up to date on their real estate taxes. Mr. Dryden did look at the agreement and we should have never been billing them PILT in the first place because the agreement only says we bill PILT. In the event they obtain tax exempt status, they are not tax exempt. Mr. Dryden also reached out to their attorney and their attorney is in agreement of that. So we owe that money back. Apologize for not having a full report for the first meeting. We have, our audit is underway. Everything is going well so far, but with audit and some illness among staff has put us a little bit behind, but we'll be up to date on that. Train has informed us that they.
Mr. Harrison, would you mind speaking a little?
Okay. Train has also informed us that they've completed the geothermal HVAC system at the Natural Bridge Elementary School. And they will, so we can begin working with Rodifer Moss and the school division on claiming the IRS tax credit.
All right. Thank you very much. Consideration of the VHC pass-through funding. Mr. Suter.
We do need a motion.
Oh, forgive me. We're.
Move to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Hi.
And I vote yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Suter.
Yes, the, as you can see in your board report, the 2025 state budget included $300,000 in funding directed towards paving of the Virginia Horse Center parking lot out in front of the Coliseum. The language in the budget amendment actually directed the funding to come to Rockbridge County. And staff felt it appropriate to memorialize the funding pass-through with a basic agreement that was drafted by Mr. Dryden. And the recommended agreement is included in your board package for consideration. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have, but the request is to approve that agreement.
Gentlemen, any questions?
Move we approve the agreement.
Mr. Lewis, is there a second or is there a question? All right, Mr. Day. Mr. Lewis.
Hi.
Mr. Day. Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Presentation by Dominion Energy on Transmission Line Proposal Process. Mr. Suter.
Chris, can you bring that up? So I've got a brief introduction. So PJM Interconnection is a regional electricity transmission organization that coordinates transportation of wholesale electricity across parts of 13 states, generally in the mid-Atlantic region. Dominion Energy is one of 21 electric service companies which are members of PJM. When increased electrical supply needs are identified, members of PJM submit proposals on options to meet the increased need. And those proposals can range from a lot of different things. Two examples that I've given you here are increasing a 500 kilovolt line to a 765 kilovolt line. Or it can, or the addition of a line parallel to an existing line. So a 500 KV line next to an existing 500 KV line. PJM's identified increased electrical needs, which is from what I can tell are generally in the northern Virginia area. And one of the multiple proposals Dominion is considering in early phase is adding an additional 500 KV line from the Turkey Hill substation, which Dominion, if you ever see it, it's called the Lexington Substation and other, that's what Dominion refers to it too, but for our purposes here, it's Turkey Hill substation to the Doom substation in Augusta County. And of course, that would have significant impacts to landowners and view shed in the county in that corridor. Prior to moving to the next step in the process, which would be to the SEC for further proceedings, different options to meet electrical needs are considered by PJM via their Transmission Expansion Advisory Committee or TAC. Included in your, in your, in your package is a document which outlines that process. You may note that there's a process for participation in TAC meetings. And upon learning that one of the Dominion's proposals involved the Turkey Hill to Dunes, I signed up and essentially just audited the latest TAC webinar on November the 6th, which went about two and a half hours to better understand the process. Next meeting will be on November 19th and then another will be on December the 3rd. Staff has researched the county's powers with regards to such expansion and deemed that electric utility expansions of greater than 138 kilovolt are not subject to local zoning requirements. However, we are researching the potential requirement of a finding that the project be in compliance with the comprehensive plan, which I believe we have determined is correct. Staff has fielded concerns from some residents, at least one, a couple of them are here tonight. Some of the concerns include the impact on residents that the lines would transect, crossing of scenic byways throughout Route 39, the Appalachian Water Scenic Byway, crossing the scenic Maury River, running parallel or being highly visible to portions of State Route 652, also scenic byway, and the finish on towers. Matina coated towers rather than shiny towers would be the preference should this process move to another step. And also, one thing I didn't put in your package, but was also brought to my attention, is the airline balls on the towers that are, that kind of make it stand out, which you don't understand for aircraft, but that's been, that was a concern. And so, given this, even though it's early in the process, we did feel prudent to invite Dominion to provide the board with a presentation outlining the PJM process. And with us this evening are Sarah Hackney, External Affairs Representative for Dominion, also Julia Levitt, Supervisor of State and Local Affairs, and Ann Gordon Michael, the Electric Transmission Communications Consultant for Dominion. And, and at this point, unless the board has any questions to me on that introduction, I'll just turn it over to Sarah.
Welcome.
And they sent us up a presentation earlier today, which should be loaded and ready to go for you.
Evening. Do you guys all hear me?
Yes, Ms. Hackney, thank you.
Thank you. My name is Sarah Hackney and I represent Dominion Energy's External Affairs Team in the West and Southwest regions of Virginia. I'm also here with Julia Levitt. She is our Supervisor of State and Local Affairs. And Ann Gordon Michael, she is our Communications Consultant on our Electric Transmission Team. So I would like to start with just a general company overview and company update, if that's all right with you all. So in Dominion Energy, we have 2.7 million customers in Dominion Energy, Virginia. We have over 19,000 employees, approximately 67,000 miles of power lines, about 20,000 megawatts of generation. We have 40 years of energy share that we help our communities. And about 15, we are about 15% below the national average for our residential rates. Overall, our mission is to provide reliable, affordable, and increasingly clean energy that powers our customers every day. So we have our diverse energy portfolio. One way we deliver on our mission is with our diverse energy portfolio. That's something we've been doing for years and we will continue to do. Some exciting recent announcements are we are currently evaluating SMRs, our small modular reactors, feasibility at our North Anna Power Station, where we have recently issued a request for proposal to leading SMR development companies. Additionally, we are developing an innovative capital and financing pro structure for these projects. And an MOU has recently been signed with Amazon for this as well. And this will help with feasibility of SMRs. Additionally, our liquefied natural gas storage unit is currently under development that will provide backup fuel storage to our Greenville and Brunswick Power Stations. And our Chesterfield Energy Reliability Center is under development to support dispatchable energy. We are also continuing to expand our solar and energy storage portfolios. And our coastal Virginia offshore wind project, our Seaval, is currently on time and on budget. We, to make sure that we meet our customers' needs, we have also, earlier this year, submitted our 2024 IRP, or Integrated Resource Plan. I will begin by explaining what this plan is and what it is not. This plan is a non-binding document that models possible paths forward about 15 years to provide, pardon me, to meet current market condition, or it's based on current market conditions, current technology, and current projected growth. In other words, it's a snapshot in time. So it uses current data that we have to project what growth we see. The IRP is not a request from the SEC for specific programs or approval for programs or cost recovery. Currently in Virginia, we are experiencing unprecedented electricity demand growth, expecting customers' power needs to double within Dominion's transmission zone by 2039. And if you look at the chart, you can see where we are now in 2024. So that's about that 22,781 megawatts. It took us about 100 years to get to that point. And you can see our growth in 2039. So it's going to be a very large growth that we are anticipating. The primary drivers of this include but are not limited to data centers, ongoing electrification of transportation, expansion of Virginia's manufacturing sector, and population increases. Overall, our public service obligation is to serve electricity to all regardless of where it originates. To meet customers' demands, the 2024 IRP indicates that significantly more kinds of all power are going to be needed. And it illustrates a continued diversified portfolio of power generation to ensure service reliability, especially on the very hot and very cold days. So here we have outlined the five portfolios of our IRP. And I want to know almost 80% of the new generation in this primary portfolio is zero carbon. I would also like to note that in 2024, the 2024 IRP does not compromise on affordability. Today, our typical residential customers pays, rates pay 14% below the national average. Affordability has always been and will continue to be a top priority for us. In addition to planning for future generation, we are also making sure to maintain a reliable grid. With that, PJM, who is a regional transmission organization that we are a part of, conducts a competitive planning process each year known as the PJM Open Window, where non-incumbent utilities can submit project proposals across PJM's footprint. For example, last year, Next Air submitted a proposal in what we call the DOM Zone. So that's that dark purple zone. And they were awarded this by PJM. Recently, PJM identified areas on the grid where constraints may occur in the near future. And solutions are needed to maintain reliability. PJM's most recent open window opened in July of this year and closed in September. The window focused on encouraging creative, long-term solutions. Dominion Energy proposed several projects, including the construction of new substations and transmission lines in a varying sizes, as well as upgrades to existing transmission infrastructure. On October 7th, Dominion Energy, AEP, or American Electric Power, and First Energy, announced an innovative collaboration to develop a large-scale transmission infrastructure that spans across the areas served by our companies. These project proposals are currently being evaluated by PJM's TAC team or Transmission Expansion Advisory Committee. It is important to note that all these proposals are very early in development stages. At this point in the process, the proposals are conceptual and potential routes will be determined if the project is approved by PJM to move forward. PJM provides a formal, public input process where participants can provide feedback on proposed projects. The TAC meets several times before selecting projects and to endorse, pardon me, times before selecting projects to endorse to the PJM board. Stakeholders can participate in the TAC meetings and register online. Final project approval by PJM is expected in February of 2025. Once a project is approved by PJM, it will go, it will still require state and local approvals. Most of our projects. It will go through the Virginia State Corpora- oh, like most of our projects, it will go through this Virginia State Corporation Commission approval process. With many opportunities for public input. Pardon me, I'll keep that one up. Overall, we want every project to be the least impactful to the community as possible. When determining routes, we undergo extensive studying of environmental, cultural, and historical resources. Community feedback is incredibly important to us throughout the process and it helps us create a more successful project. Lastly, I want to emphasize that PJM approval is the first step toward develop, developing a project. This is a multi-year process and we will keep all informed and engaged. We're happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
I, I have a few.
Go, go ahead.
Uh, as Mr. Suter had mentioned. Some of our scenic resources and I don't know whether you can answer PJM or not. Uh, but are they aware of, of our scenic resources?
So I cannot answer for PJM. I may call, um, Ann Gordon. Thank you. And she is on our transmission, um, team, communication team.
Hi, good evening. So when we submit, when our team submits, uh, proposals to PJM, we do a very high level. Uh, overview of some of the impacts that we may see. Uh, so that wasn't present on, uh, PJM's website if you were to go through that. But, uh, we do a high level look to see what some of the challenges would be to be able to construct a project. And that is under consideration when PJM is looking at, um, which packages they're going to approve.
So does that mean they are aware of them and we'll look at them or?
Um, I, I wouldn't say that they're aware of like every single one, but, um.
We're talking about three.
Right. Um, I, I don't have the exact package of what we, um, included there, but based on our, um. Understanding of the area, previous projects that we've had, um, our, our team is, um. Including this information, um, in PJM's.
And they would include the same information about the conservation easements we have along the.
I, I don't know if they get into the details of the conservation easements, but I can check on that to see if that's included.
I would think if they're gonna have to expand the right of way.
Right.
That, that when you have a conservation easement, when you go to. Expand the right of way, that creates a whole. Another set of problems and a, and a significant increase in cost and. Like everything that drives everything, the cost of the total package. Uh, if they don't include everything, then it might not seem as high as it is and.
Absolutely.
Prove the wrong thing. Um.
Was that already done? Was, have you already completed that?
That, that has been submitted. Um, I will also say that that submittal is a safety project, what we call a safety project. So we have another package that we're. Um, moving forward with PJM and hoping that that will be, um, the selected package. So if that is approved, then. Uh, this project would actually not be needed at this time. So it's, it's basically a backup to our preferred solution to meet PJM's, uh, reliability need.
So you would, you can't tonight provide us with any information about? The towers that would, how many there would be and how big they would be and.
No, and, and, and really because there's so many projects that were submitted, I mean, there were. Over ninety projects that were submitted to PJM. This is. One of the solutions that electrically meets that need. It might not be the right solution that PJM identifies. So we're really early on. So if that project were to be approved and move forward, then we would. You get a team together, uh, understand what the engineering requirements are and do extensive public outreach.
Cause, uh. I think we have. Uh, I'd say certain standards that we're expecting. Especially with towers that, that we have gone through. And then we have concerns, like if we increase the right of way. And they put towers in there and there's still space. Do the, will they come back if they were gonna do anything in addition to that? Because not, sometimes in the past, they haven't. And.
Is this a right of way or it, it's owned by, is the property owned? Was it taken? It was it taking or?
The current right of way is, is, is the right of way that through people's property that they own fee simple, but it's a, it's encumbered by the right of way. I think from what I've seen from this proposal. In some cases, part of it would be built in the existing right of way. I've not seen a map or anything. What I'm understanding is part of the existing right of way would be used, but it would, it would require. Additional property expansion of the width of the right of way. Is that correct?
Yes, so we would expand the existing right of way and negotiate easements, uh, with those property owners if that were the project that moves forward.
Right. And I guess, uh, I'll. And by saying. It, we, we know certain things are needed. But it, if we hadn't been contacted by a member of the community, we wouldn't even have been aware that this was going on. Uh, and I think whoever is responsible can do a better job communicating. That these projects might be coming forth in the future. Because like I said, if we hadn't been commu- communicated with by a citizen saying, hey, I found this out. Root could have been approved and all done and we'd have been sitting here going, how did that happen?
I will, I will say that, that, uh, Sarah and Julia came to me. Last year about this time and mentioned that they might be doing it and I was, if they were gonna do that. So, you know, she, she said it was something about this project, but at the time they didn't know if they were gonna apply. And I said, well. Bring back some additional information with a little bit more detail. They didn't end up applying in that. In that round. And I think that the next time it just slipped through, I guess, and just, I don't know if y'all even knew he was applying on that in, in July, so. Um, so that the original attempt was made, but there wasn't a real point in bringing it to you at the time because. It never material, materialized as an application. At that time. For the spring.
But if I understand correctly, you wanted to make sure that the sensitivity, the, the area's sensitivity and its value to our community and all of that was front and center and in your materials. And so I'm not, we don't know what those materials are, so we don't know whether you have what we would like you to have. I guess, is what I would like to hear, that you have the information we would like you to have. Um, is there any way that we can? Do that?
I'll have to check to, to make sure that it's okay to share that, but, um, I will certainly see what I can find out.
Yep, yep, great, thank you.
I will say as well, you, um, are all able to sign up for those TAC meetings. And you guys can put in public input as well. So you are able to sign up for those transmission expansion advisory committee meetings. And put in public comment, which could include those concerns.
Hi, good evening, Julia Levitt. I just wanted to add also, um, I believe we have shared PJM, uh, direct contact with PJM. Um, their contact information with the county administrator and, um, we'll circulate that around as well, um, so that you all can make sure that. You provide those comments to PJM. Um, as Sarah mentioned, this is just the first step, so. If PJM does select a project to move forward, we will then continue with our regular, um, SCC process and I'll. If Ann, Ann Gordon, do you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, so this essentially, if this project is approved, then we would need to go through that entire SCC process. So we would need to look at what the engineering would be, what the permits are, what permits are required, what other local permitting may be required for. Um, the entire scope of work. So it would be a, a pretty lengthy process, including extensive community outreach. And we, we heard, uh, some concerns from, uh, this area based on a previous project. So we definitely want to make sure that we're making it right if we do need to come back and build this extra line. Uh, so there'd be, uh. Definitely, uh, multiple opportunities for community meetings and then the SCC process has its own, um, community outreach, um, sorry, community involvement. With public hearings as well.
Mm-hmm. You mentioned ninety projects and then you mentioned that this project was second. I'm, I'm trying to understand that.
So in the entire, um, open window process for PJM this year, more than ninety projects, um, outside of Dominion Energy. Were, um, submitted, not just for this one electric need, but around the PJM territory. So there are other non-incumbent, uh, transmission companies like Dominion that may bid on a project in our territory. So there are, uh, multiple ways to solve solutions and so PJM considers what makes sense. Realistically, from an electrical standpoint, also what offers some of this flexibility for the future and can meet, uh, large, uh, regional demands. Like the growth that Sarah mentioned that we're seeing. So it's, uh, multiple factors. It's, it's looking at how much, uh, what's the cost of these projects? Uh, what's the electrical, uh, flexibility that we have? Uh, we also, they do take into consideration community impacts, um. Anything like that and, um, they, then they'll make their decisions, um, in February.
Of, of the two projects that.
Of all the projects. So it's a big, it's a big, uh, decision with, um, just outside of Dominion. It's not just what they're looking at for us.
I may misunderstood you, but did you say that this is not your preferred route or project?
We do have another solution that we have proposed that is not located in this county. If that is approved, then this. Project, uh, between Dunes and Lexington substations would not be needed at this time. Does not mean at some point in the future, we might have another project, but for now, it would not be needed.
And when would we know that?
In February.
All right, gentlemen, are there any others?
I have it on my calendar to participate in the, the, um, the next meeting. On November nineteenth, if there are any, uh, comments or questions the board would like me to. To pose at that time. I'm happy to do that. Um, and, uh. Any board members, uh, not more than two, but, uh, would like to sit in with me on that or. Sign up, uh, sign up separately. We can get you signed up to do that, to audit or provide comments.
And, and how do we let the community at large know that they can participate this way as well, correct?
Well, I think that was one of the, one of the reasons that we thought it prudent to go ahead and have this meeting to, to have it. Uh, more widely broadcast, if you will.
Mm-hmm. So you don't advertise in the, in the area? You don't advertise?
The, the TAC meetings, uh, we don't, they're, they're pretty technical. I'm sure you, you may have heard it. It's, it's hard for, uh. Myself to, to fully get all the projects, so.
Certainly the, the landowners involved should, should be invited to.
Yeah, and, and, and I'm, I'm only saying that because, uh. Only the past few years have people really started to pay attention to these open window projects. Um, as they're so early on in the process, many of these projects are not selected at the end of the day. So we're not trying to, um, you know, frighten anyone by a project that may or may not happen. And it really is PJM's process that they're working through. So it is open to the public, but there's also other means to contact them. Uh, but we're also available if there are questions, if, if any member of the community or if you have any questions after watching the next TAC meeting. We can help answer, clarify any content that's reviewed.
I, I just want all of our constituents in our county to be notified if, if, that, that's what I'm interested in. I'm sure we can figure that out between you all and.
But I don't think it's PJM that's doing the process. So we're talking to the wrong people.
Okay.
I, I understand that it, it, it feels like it, it's a, it's a weird process, but, um. Even if it is approved, if the projects in your area are approved, uh, we still have to go through the SCC process, which allows everyone that's in the area to participate. And provide their comments and, uh, work with us as we're planning the project and working towards a filing date.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, presentation by Main Street Lexington Court, uh, Square Veterans Memorial proposed.
Skip to the public hearings.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Let's do that. Forgive me, gentlemen, we, all right, consideration, um. Uh, hold on, here we go. Mr. Slayton.
Yes, uh, we have two public hearings associated with the same property this evening. Uh, the first being a rezoning application, uh, Jubilee Hill LLC fifteen, uh. Fifteen Mossy Green Terrace, Lexington, Virginia has made an application for a zoning map amendment. Uh, the property is owned by Jubilee Hill LLC is located on the east side of North Lee Highway Route eleven. Approximately point eight-six miles south of the intersection of Lee Highway and Valley Pike Road. Valley Pike Road is further identified as Route six forty-five. Uh, the property is accessed by Park Place, that is a private road, as identified as forty Park Place, Lexington, Virginia two four four five zero. Properties in the South River Magisterial District. Uh, the property outlined in magenta here is further identified as tax map number sixty-two dash four dash one C seven. And consists of three point zero eight-eight acres per tax records. Property is currently located in the general business zone. Turn on my zoning real quick. Uh, the general business zone is the dark red on the map, uh, so it's contiguous to business zone as well as the light red. The pink on the map, if you will, is the agricultural transitional zone. Uh, the application is to rezone the property to the agricultural transitional zone, AT zoning district. To continue the use of a private school. Currently Park and Pool, which is a commercial outdoor furniture distributor, utilizes half the building and the Blue Ridge Autism and Achievement Center, B R A A C. Utilizes the other half. At its October ninth, twenty twenty-four meeting, the planning commission held its public hearing and has recommended approval of the rezoning application. There are no proffers associated with the application. With that, I'd like to turn, uh, the floor over to the, uh, owner, uh, in attendance this evening with, with, uh, Jubilee Hill LLC, Ms. Brenda Foner. And also, uh, Russell Orson, engineer, uh, on the, on the proposal.
Right. Good evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Gentlemen, um, uh, the first part is just the rezoning. And so I assume that you looked at the narrative on the cover sheet of the plan that I provided and I think the, uh. The, the last sentence of the first paragraph was the important part, just. The way our ordinance is written to allow an educational facility, we decided the easiest way forward, the best way forward is to, um. Put and downzone the property to AT and then, uh, that way that we would have a, uh, a special exception. Process to allow the specific use. It's a use that's already gone on in the building. The building exists. We're not adding to the building. Or taking anything from the building. We're gonna add some parking. We'll talk about that during the, during the special exception part, but the. Rezoning seems to be extremely straightforward and if you have any questions, I'd be glad to ask.
Anything, anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, no comments? And if not, I will, uh, open the public hearing.
Madam Chair, no one has signed up.
Okay.
No one has their hand raised.
Anybody? In the audience? All right. Are there any other comments? If not, I will close the public hearing. Their motion to adopt or? All right, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Hi.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Mr. Slayton?
All right, this is the second, uh, public hearing associated with the special exception. Uh, Jubilee Hill LLC has made a, a special exception permit to continue the use of a property of the property as a private school. Uh, for the record, property is further identified as tax map sixty-two dash four dash one C seven. Consists of three point zero eight-eight acres per tax records. With the previous action of the Board of Supervisors, property is currently located in agricultural transitional zoning district. Per section six oh three point oh three dash seventeen of the regulations. Private schools are used by special exception in the AT zoning district. Again, currently Park and Pool, Park and Pool utilizes half the building and the B R A A C utilizes. and the BRAAC utilizes the other half. While BRAAC has utilized a portion of the building since August of 2016, to my knowledge, Office of Community Development was unaware of this use. In most cases, this issue would have been identified during a business license process. There is a zoning component to issuance of a business license. But due to BRAAC being a 501(c)(3) business, the professional occupation license tax, BPOS tax, AKA business license, does not apply to the organization. At its, at its October 9th, 2024 meeting, the Planning Commission held its public hearing and has recommended approval of the special exception application with the following conditions. Number one, the development of the property tax map 62-4-1C7, 3.088 acres per tax records for which the application is being made shall be substantial in accordance with the conceptual site plan titled VIA Center for Neurological Development, Rezoning and Special Exception, prepared by Perkins and Orson dated September 9th, 2024. Number two of the conditions as recommended is a total number of students not to exceed 24. Number three, the school shall be limited to day students only, no boarding students. Number four, the school shall be limited to ages 2 through 22. Number five, all trash will be taken directly to the landfill and not a county collection center or county green boxes. Number six, lighting shall be in compliance with 1303 of the County Rockridge Land Development, excuse me, Land Development Regulations. And number seven, the final recommended approval, approval contingent upon VDOT, Virginia Department of Transportation, Public Service Authority, Building Department, and the Rockridge County Office of Fire Rescue and Emergency Management approvals and compliance with the Department of Education requirements. With that, I'd like to stop sharing my screen and turn the floor back over to Mr. Orson, Russ Orson with Perkins and Orson, engineer on the project, and owner of the property, owner of the Jubilee Hill LLC, Ms. Brenda Foner.
Thank you again. Again, going back to the narrative, if you look at the second main paragraph of the narrative, it describes the service that that my client provides for the kids. They currently have 10 children with 12 staff. They want to move it to 24 students and 30 staff for 24 students. The only thing from a site plan perspective, if you look at the second page, we had to add a significant amount of parking, it's about 32 parking spaces we're adding. The the trick to that is that we have that high pressure gas main going across the site. So we've had to work with the gas company to ensure that we have a layout that's acceptable to them. And and this layout is acceptable to them, of course. It'll go through the normal review process with Jonathan as as far as erosion, sediment control. But as far as normal site plan stuff, roads, water, sewer, we're not changing any of that, we're just adding a parking lot. So we're going to have to change that stormwater management facility a little bit. But that's really all we're doing on the site. If you have anything to add, feel free, but if not, we'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Russ, help me understand, it's mentioned there's a relocated utility pole. Is this the relocation, relocated site or where it is?
It's right in the middle of that entrance and there's just no way to get that entrance any other place. So we just have to scoot it down to there.
Where it's shown here is where it's going to be.
That's correct. You can't quite see it because it's halftoned in the middle of that entrance. But that's, if you could look real close, that's where you would see it. Yeah.
And refresh my memory through there, the Public Service Service Authority, the water line is down by 11. Is there any PSA in there? I guess I should.
Oh, yeah, we have public water and public sewer. They hit a bunch of rock when they were doing Park and Pool. I wasn't intimately involved, but when they hit so much rock that they couldn't gravity serve that building, our firm actually designed a pump station, not because the sewer wasn't below the building, but because we had to go through so much rock, we actually put in a pump station to get over the rock rather than excavate the rock. So there's a pump station, but it's to public sewer. So we're served by public water and public sewer.
And that that line there is, well, it's a PSA line, right? It's not an MSA line. There's no MSA through here, even though farther up, there's MSA tanks.
I don't know, but we're absolutely served by a PSA line. Correct. Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
32 employees for 20, 20, what was that, 24 children? It's a lot of employees.
It's a lot. I think it's a one to one plus administrative plus whatever else. But I think it's one to one as far as teachers, if you will, to students at all times.
Three hours.
It's on the, it's in the narrative, but it's a normal business hours and it's eight to five.
Anything else?
And the transportation, it's not by buses or by any public transportation, purely by people dropping off in private vehicles. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I will now open the public hearing. Are there any comments?
Madam Chair, no one has signed up.
No one has their hand raised.
Anybody online?
No ma'am.
All right. I will now close the public hearing. Is there any board discussion about this? If not, entertain a motion. Mr. Day, Mr. Lewis, Mr. McDaniel, Mr. Lyons, and I vote yes. Thank you. Now we will move back to presentation by Main Street Lexington Court Square.
Yes, and the first thing I'm going to do is apologize profusely for not putting you all in front of Dominion. I'm sorry about that. I, it gets busy on agenda day. So as as you all know, in the early 2000s, as Mr. Hawkins went over earlier, the county and the city of Lexington partnered to build a new circuit courthouse at the corner of Nelson and Randolph. The county then worked with Adamson Development based in Richmond to repurpose the old courthouse, which was renovated and then leased to WNL as office space. The county kept a 0.017 acre parcel, which was dedicated as the county's Veterans Memorial through through a tremendous amount of volunteer work, as you heard, and fundraising, primarily by the VFW. The remainder of the courthouse grounds was deeded by Adamson Development back to the city of Lexington and remains their property. Over the past year, through an imperative from the city's downtown enhancement plan, Main Street Lexington's been working on a proposal to redesign the courthouse grounds. And my understanding is this is an effort to encourage more public use, rehabilitate the space and increase accessibility. And headed by Jesse Lyons, who stands before you, a committee was formed to explore various designs. And I was asked to participate in the initial meetings. And Mr. Lyons has kept me update, updated through the process. And several renditions of a redesign were considered. And recently, Mr. Lyons approached me with a final draft of the proposed design, which would include shifting the current Veterans Memorial approximately 25 feet north and east to a position in front of the old courthouse. Other changes proposed taking place on city property would include a terrace space with three levels with brick pavers, several new trees. And as mentioned before about accessibility, a handicap access point on the west side of the plaza near the Hess Building. It's my understanding that county courthouse, that the owner of the courthouse, John Adamson with Adamson Development, is willing to transfer the parcel needed for the memorial shift and it would remain in possession of the county. And and the VFW post has provided Jesse with a letter of support for the project, which are also attached in your board package. I did see Mr. Adamson here earlier, it looked like he had to run out.
Going to another meeting.
Okay, but I will, I will note from my perspective, personal perspective, he's been a great, a great partner to work with over the years. So Main Street Lexington proposes to pay for the project via a combination of grants. They've made an application to the Virginia 250 Preservation Fund and a donation pledged by WNL. It's additionally, it's my understanding that the city has prior budgeted funds for this year and next year to support, at this time, no funds are being requested from the county. And as noted, the request for, to the county is to agree to move the Veterans Memorial 25 feet to the north and east and accept land for the the ownership. It's my understanding also that Lexington City Council, along with review by the city agriculture, agricultural, architectural review board as an additional owner of the combined space, will be taking this issue up in the very near future. And again, Mr. Lyons is with us this evening to answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you for being here.
You're welcome, Madam Chair. And if I can add a little bit of color without over speaking for too long around a subject. Again, thank you for having me, supervisors, county staff. My name is Jesse Lyons. I've lived here for 22 years. I came to work here to work for Cap Alf Orders National Headquarters, which at the time was in the jail building or the jailer's residence in the courthouse square, which is my, one of my primary drivers in being involved in this project. I've not previously volunteered with Main Street Lexington before, but have been deeply involved in the community and deeply care about the community, but the county and the city from Friday's Alive, Community Festival, Sonic Lodge, lots of initiatives that I love to get behind and support pursuant to the veterans in the VFW. I grew up in a VFW. My dad was quartermaster of our local post whenever he passed away. And it was great to reconnect with folks like David Karoski and Bob Hopkins sitting behind me and become friends with them through this project. I won't recount everything that came to pass because county administrator just did a very good job. And I know it's sitting right in front of you and in your board materials. But something we learned through the project, and I think is important to any project, is what are the finites? One of them is the county wants to remain the owner of the memorial, and they will in this project. One of them, one of them is that the VFW and the veterans want the memorial to look the same in this project, and it will. And the other one is that everybody has been generally supportive and excited about the rehabilitation of a historic space. And two points I want to make, or a couple of historical points I want to make. Of course, next year, well, next year will be the 25th anniversary of the memorial in downtown Lexington owned by the county. It will also be the 100th anniversary of the World War I cannon being accepted by the town of Lexington as a spoil from the war and given by the War Department. And it was delineated in those town minutes to be the first war memorial in Lexington and Rockbridge County. Okay, so there's two anniversaries of those two items. And they play into the plans pretty greatly. The following year, as you know, is the America and Virginia 250 anniversary. And we have applied to DHR and we met with the DHR rep today, who's very encouraged by our plans. And actually, the the plans return the space to its original function, which was a community gathering space on Courtyard and what it was there for. But what we didn't know ostensibly was that in the following year, 2026, that will be the 250th anniversary of the General Assembly approving the city of Lexington to be established as a town and the county of Rockbridge. So directly following America and Virginia. The whole reason that courthouse, or the whole reason that our communities were established was to place a courthouse on that corner in between Stanton and Rona to create less of a travel time for the folks going up and down the Great Road. And so the whole reason our community is here is the courthouse in the courthouse square. What better way to celebrate those anniversaries than by rehabbing the space as a combined community effort amongst all the groups? County administrator is correct, we have secured a leadership gift from Washington Lee in the amount of $250,000. And there is a total of $120,000 in city budget this and next year, 60 each. So no increase in budget requested from either municipality, which we thought as a committee was important. And the balance, close to $1 million, was asked for in the grant proposal from DHR. And if that, many people have asked, if that funding is not fully funded or partially funded, which could happen as well, then we'll come, we'll embark on an aggressive fundraising campaign to complete the project as proposed, if approved. And the other finite that we wanted to make sure of is we start working on people's land or talking about someone else's land, we want that approval first. And that's why this is the first public announcement of the program after the designs were endorsed by the people that put them together. And that was the executive committee. I'm the chairman, Steve McAllister, the vice president at WNL is on the committee, Arthur Bartonstein from ABL Landscapes is the landscape designer and on the committee, Rebecca Logan from Main Street Lexington, and Jeff Hughes, who is the former president of Main Street and the design committee chairman, who's intimately involved with downtown. And then the advisory committee, really, it's almost an open door. But we invited more than 20 folks to participate. That would be stakeholders, property, property owners, the garden club and several other folks. And they've all been excited about the design. And I have printouts here of the current site plan, the proposed site plan, and then an elevation from the street view of the site plan that I'd be happy to pass out or give for pass out if you all would like to see.
If if I saw that, like, the current site, you step right off the sidewalk and you enter the site, is that the same?
The elevation works, elevation works to where it almost, it is exactly the same. And if you look at the third page, it will give you a very good idea of that site plan. And you'll see on the second page, you'll see the relocated memorial proposed. It's an adjacent, very similarly sized parcel. And and county administrator is correct, the proposal here that we're putting forward to the board is to accept land from the Adamson Development Corporation that exists there right now and allow Main Street to conduct this project in specifics, to move the memorial to that location and reinter it to where it is proposed.
Now, the existing site, it's owned by the county.
It is.
Will that continue to be owned by the county?
I'm not proposing any change to that tonight. And and I don't want to muddy this project. I think it's important that we, if the project is approved, that we get the the approval for John Adamson and the county to work out the land deal and for if the funding comes in or when the funding comes in for the for the group to begin to engage a general contractor, bring on a couple of experts and start the project. And where 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 you're looking at what the county owns currently in page two would be where the precast steps were in the brick paves. That would be what remains following the project. But I I would like you to take a look at page three if you haven't already because World War, World War I era cannon downtown is owned by John Adamson. It's part of the deed of that courthouse, if I recall. And it, and out there on the corner, without a lot of context, always gets a lot of questions. But knowing what we know, and it was David and the VFW and others that provided the information, a plaque's been missing there for for a long time. Marrying that up as the city and county war memorial in Toto downtown for the 25th and 100th anniversary of those two items really brings it, really brings it out and puts it on street level, opens up the promenade to the courthouse, which was anecdotally, again, this gets into the city plans that we're going to propose to ARB and the council. But that courthouse was designed by Thomas U. Walter, which was an amazing feat here. Thomas U. Walter designed the Capitol Dome in Washington, DC. He also designed some of the plans for Lexington Presbyterian Church. And for the county to contract him at the time that he did that is a major boon to the county and an architectural jewel in downtown Lexington that we all can enjoy. I also know that Colonel Hopkins would like to speak to the memorial move and our proposal for that. And I'm happy if that's what, Madam Chair, that you'd allow him to speak. And I'm happy to come back up and answer questions to wrap up the presentation.
Certainly, Mr. Hopkins.
I'm full of pleas tonight, I guess. I have another plea for you. And that is that maybe we could get as a goal to get this project done by Veterans Day of next year. Jesse mentioned that the, it would be the 100th anniversary of the cannon that Lexington got after World War I. And did you know this, that the Veterans Memorial for probably 80 years here in Lexington and for the county as well, the entire memorial was a flagpole and a cannon. That was it until we built what we have now. So it would be a great, and it's also the, it would be the 25th anniversary of the memorial itself. So we could have a dual anniversary type thing. In the year 2000. Um, in the year two thousand, part of the, uh, dedication ceremony that we had was a parade right down Main Street. And it was a parade of veterans, we still had World War Two veterans at the time and more, uh, Korean War veterans, and then we had the Vietnam vets, and we had veterans then from the first Gulf War in nineteen ninety-one. Each veterans group walked as a group, and, uh, just in front of the group, we had, uh, cheerleaders from the high school with a banner that said, uh, you know, nineteen forty-one, nineteen forty-five, World War Two veterans or something, and the, these girls would carry the banner and the, the men would walk behind. Some of them, uh, were infirm at the time and, but we got World War Two Jeeps where they could ride in those and everything, and so on. And, uh, being a retired Air Force guy, uh, who goes over and gives, uh, lectures sometimes to the Air Force R O T C and other people at B M I, and also having been a fighter pilot, I thought it'd be a good idea for the parade to have a flyby, a flyover coming right down Main Street. And I got the right forms together and the right signatures on the form, and, uh, this was approved by the Pentagon, who then tasked the Virginia Air National Guard to do that job. At the time, they were, uh, based out of Richmond, and they were flying F sixteen fighter planes. So their commander called me and I request, I had requested two airplanes, um, and I've done flybys myself, and I know that you, you can't just count on one because something might happen and then you'd have to cancel out, so you have a spare. So he asked me that question, and I gave him that answer, and he said, that's not what I mean, he said, why didn't you ask for four, because that's what I'm gonna send? So we had, we had it all approved, that a flight of four fighter planes were gonna come right down Main Street, and it turned out, incidentally, that the, uh, the squadron commander at the time was a B M I graduate, and he also knew that, that these airplanes would fly straight down Main Street, they would fly right over B M I as well. So this was gonna be really neat. Uh, remember Al Hockaday, uh, Al Hockaday was the primary speaker that day, along with, uh, Mayor John Knapp and myself and some others. But the, like, you, the worst thing could happen would be if it poured down rain that day, and by gosh, it did pour down rain, and it was a low ceiling and the planes couldn't, couldn't come down. Uh, they had a, whatever it was, thousand foot minimum or something, and the, the ceiling was like five hundred feet, so we had to cancel that. But the veterans all marched in the parade and everybody got soaking wet, and, uh, anyway, that, that was, that was the first day. But if we could get this done by next Veterans Day, um, I would entertain the idea of organizing another parade. And, uh, of course, we'd have to coordinate that with the city and everything, but that might be something, uh, something kind of fun and memorable, and it'll be a good occasion, I think. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hopkins.
Madam Chair, if there's anything I can answer, I'm happy to.
I have one minor question, I'm just not sure I'm seeing the diagram right. On page two, where the precast steps are.
Yes.
That brings you up one level, and then you would walk forward a little bit and turn left and go up some more steps to get to the memorial?
That's actually down. Those steps are down. The ones into the memorial will be down, it remains kind of somewhat below grade.
And so, and then what I'm really wondering about is there's an opening between U S flag and the memorial, but I, on the street view, I don't see an opening. And it's minor, I just wanted to make sure.
So it's, it's tight, it's tight, my eyes, my eyes are tight too, but if you look, uh, let's pretend where the word Rockbridge is on the center plate, look below it, there's a vertical line, because that stone masonry is gonna be the same on the very inside as is the outside planter.
Okay.
And so, um.
Looks like a step up right there.
Yeah, it's, it should be on grade with the sidewalk, that's the plan proposed, and there is an entrance there.
Okay.
Straight in, same entrances as exist right now.
I got you. Great, yeah, just, yeah, now that you say that, I can see it, but.
Yeah, it's a, it's a very thin little line, yes. Um, which allows for, um, disabled access to the memorial. Correct, it is there, and just again, I don't want to get too far into the city's plans here, I'm happy to answer questions about them if you're interested, but the far right side is the handicap path that allows for access to all three levels of the tiered terrace.
I got just two little questions.
Yes, sir.
Uh, the, uh, U S flag, are we gonna fly the Virginia flag there also, or?
It was, it was requested by the veterans to go down to one U S flag, and that's why it's proposed that way, that's, that's all I can share with you on that.
Okay, I think it'd be nice to have, but it's just my opinion. Um, and listening to Mr. Hopkins, do we, can you propose, or not tonight, but get us a timetable of what would have to be done to accomplish what he asked for?
Sure, I'd love to walk you through the next few steps, so, um, if, um, say the county approves this plan as I've presented, um, we are, we have a packet being put together to propose to the A R B, which they need to review, um, and Arthur Bartonstein, uh, will present that with the committee and answer any questions, that includes, as you know, samples of what's gonna be used and so on. That's a hurdle, um, I don't consider it a giant hurdle, I consider it a necessary hurdle for buy-in, because if, if you've noticed, my, our whole goal is that everybody's happy with this great development. The city council would have to approve the plans, uh, pertaining to the remaining amount, because it is a zero boundary line, or zero, I, I'm getting these terminologies wrong, but the whole property, other than, uh, the point one seven acres is city property, except for I'll call the front lawn of the courthouse. So they'll approve the plans, and in December, we'll know whether the grant funding came through. And so if we can start turning dirt, maybe hard dirt, cold, frozen, but hard, uh, start turning dirt, figuratively speaking, and literally in January, a couple of G Cs have proposed an eight-month process for the project. Uh, it would be, and it would be our committees and mine personally, and I know Bob and the VFWs took complete it well in advance of November eleventh, twenty twenty-five. Good weather. And flower.
The, the relocated, where it's going to be relocated?
Yes, sir.
Is that included in the point one seven acres county owns or not?
Currently, what it, the county owns is approximately point one seven acres right now. John Adamson and his company is willing to transfer land equal to that amount, adjacent to the current property, to allow the counties, the county to own that new point zero one seven acreage and the memorial on a new location.
Yeah, that, that's my only concern, you know, it, uh, agree wholeheartedly with everything you presented, but it's the county's property right now, and I want it to be the county's property when it's finished.
That's, I mean, that is the, that is a consideration for the, however it works out for the land transfer, but that's foundational for us.
You mean the, the new site?
Yes. Yes.
And I think we need to retain the existing property also.
Yeah, well, that's not up for discussion at, at this time, right?
I'm not, I don't have a proposal on that.
Unless you want to talk about that now.
I mean, to, to Mr. Day's question, that what's been proposed tonight doesn't, doesn't, doesn't stop, doesn't prevent his concern, if we accept, we're, we're saying we're accepting new property.
Correct.
Is my understanding. So as we step through this, that, that, those discussions could be had, but to, to get everybody else started right.
We want you to be able to move forward with your project.
So that's what, I mean, we, we, Mr. Day's concern can continue to be talked about without, I don't think, stalling with, with the whole project, because the goal here tonight is to accept the.
That's not my intention to stall in any way, but I wanted to put it right in my thoughts.
I guess the only thing that might amend the proposal tonight is to allow us then to redevelop the current county property after the memorial's moved, as you see it designed here, that'd be, which means putting brick papers down in a couple of steps, as long as that's okay.
I have no problem, as long as we still retain.
Got it. Spencer, is this, is this requiring a, a vote?
I think just a consensus to, to move ahead, I mean, the, the vote would be required to accept new property.
Actually ready to be accepted.
But in speaking with Jesse, in, in order to get this ball rolling, this is one first step that, that needed to happen, uh, it's a, it's a, you can certainly, somebody can always make a motion and, and you can vote on it, but, uh, a consensus is, um, would allow this to move ahead just the same.
Happy to do it.
Well, let's, let's, I'll make a motion that, that we do what we need to do to get this thing rolling.
I certainly want to miss out on grant funds either, you know.
Right, that we endorse the, that we endorse the proposal and get out of the way, and then with the land transfer, that's a totally separate thing that we'll deal with. I'll second that.
All right. Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
I.
And I vote yes. Gentlemen, thank you very much for coming and your, your wait here this evening.
Hope to see that flower.
Has everyone had a chance to review your monthly staff reports?
Oh.
Oh, my goodness, what's wrong with me today?
Smack me around.
Smack me around, all right.
We're saving more money.
Yes, of course, Mr. Dryden, number ten.
Yeah, that, we have for, for the board for their consideration, some changes, uh, to the, uh, articles of the M S A, which we'll now unlabel them to get, uh, borrow additional money to, for approvals which they need to make. And the reason why that's being done is the way the M S A was originally organized was to do a particular single project, and was, and every time the M S A then needs to expand a project, they have to amend their articles and file it with the S E C, and the amendment of the articles requires the membered localities, which is Lexington, Buena Vista, and the county, to approve any changes to the articles. We are in the process of, um, revising that, so in the future, that won't be necessary, but for this particular borrowing, um, we need to present this to the, to the board supervisors to see if there's any objections, and then to vote and, and to be in agreement to the, uh, to adopting any changes to the articles.
This is, this is actually to set public hearings, and, uh, and also, this is something that, uh, based on the current articles that the city of Lexington and the city of Buena Vista councils, uh, would also need to do. And we, we are actually going first in the process by setting the public, by setting a public hearing, uh, they, this would be set for the, the second meeting in November, and, um, um, it matter of fact, based on the fact that, that, uh, Monday was, yesterday was a holiday, uh, we went, uh, went ahead and advertised, uh, to be able to do that, because the deadline was to get it in the paper this morning, or, or, you know, had, our deadline was today, so, well, I'm stumbling over myself, but we had, we had to go ahead and do it in advance. Um, so we're kind of making an assumption, but that doesn't mean you, you have to do this, uh, you could always cancel the public hearing, but, um.
Gentlemen, are you all right with that?
I mean, I'm okay with the public hearing, but I, I, I have some questions around what, what we're doing here, I mean, is it, would it, would we still have a say in what the M S A does, or if by changing this, would the M S A be able to go borrow whenever, whatever?
No, no, that, that's not that issue, this issue is to approve a particular change to the articles authorizing a particular project in a particular borrowing, so there's no change by this action, there'd be no change in the status quo. In the future, there's discussion to make changes to the articles, which will, uh, would incorporate some of those, those issues, but that's not what's before the board right now, and will not be before the board when this resolution, uh, comes to you for the public, after the public hearing.
Is it one tie?
Yeah, this is just in the same thing that we've done a few times in the past, to allow them to borrow additional money for a particular project, which will be enumerated in the articles.
And to, just to give you a little background on that, this is to finish the, uh, the loop, the water loop replacement of it along, um, um, the bypass, uh, and that would finish the, the, the loop upgrades. And it's been in the plan, and also the funding, uh, for this, for the debt service on this borrowing is, uh, it's already built into the M S A rates, there's no request from, uh, financial support from the county, uh, the P S A or the city. Um, so, yeah, it's, it's already, it's, it's been in their C I P, and, uh, it's already budgeted in their rates. So again, the request is just to authorize us to set the public hearing.
Confirm the setting of the public hearing?
Yeah.
Since it's already been advertised, it will be advertised.
Got it, Mark.
Yes.
I'll second.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
You said.
I'm sorry, Mr. Lyons, Mr. Lewis?
I.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Now, I believe, I'm sure you'll correct me if I'm wrong, but we're moving over to the monthly staff reports. Have you had a chance to review those?
We accept, uh, the reports.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis, is there a second?
Okay.
All right, Mr. Lewis?
I.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
And I vote yes. A reminder that there is a joint public, a joint meeting of the Rockbridge County Board of Supervisors and Rockbridge County School Board on Thursday, November fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, at five P M. at the Rockbridge Innovation Center, located at one four three Greenhouse Road, Lexington, Virginia. This meeting is the first meeting on the approved budget schedule. Any committee updates? Or board comments?
Madam Chair, I'd just like to say that, uh, I think it's very fitting tonight, uh, that we discussed so many items around veterans and, and it's Veterans Day yesterday, and, uh, just would like to say thank you to all the veterans, uh, actively serving or, or have previously served in, in any of our branches, uh, uh, we're very fortunate for their willingness to serve.
Yes, we are, thank you.
I think we've got two of them in the room right now.
One in the back and one in the front.
Right, who?
The, Sheriff Funkhouser and, and Ashton. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, thank you. All right, uh, if there's, uh, there's no other unfinished business, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Some of them.
All right, Mr. McDaniel, is there a second?
Yeah.
On that, Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?